We left, we stayed in a big apartment. A whole big apartment or something. We left, we were the two hours. He's going to sit down.
Yep.
This is all. I just do. That's all. That's all. He's watching. These people would be like. No. He's well planning. Sorry. They're the mom. Wait, time. But these are, you need to have it. They could. Right, right. Or less. You feel less than I should. What happened to where my home? There's something. No. Something. Yeah. All of the things. I'm sorry. I mean, I don't call it now. I'm sorry. Oh, we shouldn't have said it's part of school. Well, that's not like. Can you speak to some? My shit, you have to see. Yeah. 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 Two last minutes. I'll shoot it down.
I'm gonna break you out of the grave.
And the onions. That's why. And, uh. Had a visit.
I see the same.
Yeah. Yeah. Those are good. That's good. That's really straight. Yep. Now, so.
Okay.
Do you hear about? Do you hear about?
Yeah.
Did that four. It's not a farm.
Uh.
I believe most of the time.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Oh, sorry. Is that where we're here? Hey, little. Oh, so you guys do your stuff. One hour. You should. I was. There you go.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. You want to.
I haven't heard of that. And then heard of something. Yeah.
And that. Obviously.
And then you ask. You mean to. Properly, I said, well, it's proper when I call from. Yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna turn the recording. The first one's Catholic.
Shaw some. I'm. I saw some.
Good.
My wife, right. I, I don't know. I don't know what it looks like. And I heard you received. I'll bring you the address.
I know you changed that for me. And I said, I kind of. So.
So, I, I like saying with the. I just. I mean.
Thank you so much. All right. I'm sure.
You hear that? I wish they all placed it.
Yes.
You guys have.
Yes. From the original, you have a right to say.
You're checking. Come on. That's close. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's about. It's about.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's about. Are they easy? And this one. I still.
Okay.
How was it? Now. Yeah. I, you know what? Yeah. Mark. In serious. Can you see her? Face. I was like. But we reset. So. This is just. Everybody is. It's. And. The. The. I'm. Yeah. Can say.
That's.
Oh, man. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. Yeah.
I guess. Now. I just.
I'm. That's.
I have. Yeah.
It's.
Yeah. Well, when they set them up, they set them up. Up right up there. So I made a question back further than I needed to do. I don't want to sit in front of whoever I don't get.
Getting rid. No.
It's usually either in front of what we want to be. In front of the main seats.
Thank you for sending your son over. Have he told you directly? What do you think? Just like you. He's coming.
Do you have their name? Oh. We don't.
I heard it. Sure. I have. They. I saw that. It was like to being. It's. Um. It's. The main school.
All right. That's.
Okay. I get ready too.
Okay. I can send you here. Here.
What?
Okay.
Alex. I'm patient.
Yeah. Stop. You can. Stop. Right. Yeah.
I. Yeah.
That's. I. That's. Then I buy.
Yes.
I just.
Oh. He doesn't. Yeah. Really? Oh, my God. I wasn't. We have to find. Everyone wasn't kidding. Actually, we have to find one. Yeah. Somebody. So you can start. Aren't you on the chairman? No, aren't you on the board? It's like. Yes.
I don't.
To find one. What time it is? Do you know where it is? I have. I guess.
We just. That's.
All of these. Those mine. The nations inside. United States of America. And to the Republic. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The. Sweden's repetition.
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the AdWords Press and posted on the Multi-Form, and the officer attached. They put a meeting for eight hours in advance. Public at the ready to attend this meeting and physical confidence minimum of this meeting will be available in public suspension. The meeting is a criteria of the open public meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Quintero, Mr. Garbiel, Mr. Sable.
Here.
Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Plansdown, Mr. Hertzel.
Yeah.
Mr. Reiner, Mr. Isaacson.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Raisin.
Swag of professionals. You swear professionally before you. Yes. Okay. Number three, normalization resolutions.
Yes, we have five resolutions. Um. One of these, we're having requested. Copy and by plan prior to that document, that's a three to five minutes. The first resolution is SB twenty-three, twenty-four major site plan. Um, I have that Mr. Stern, Mr. Hertzel, Mr. Isaacson will not have a meeting.
Smooth. This is. Second order favor. I understand.
SB twenty-three, thirty-one major site plan.
Move. Second. Can I request an advantage on this one? So. Yeah. Target two, anything one. I thought he's got five or seven. He's probably remember, right?
I think that my mental math. Though my notes, when I checked out this one, I know the minutes, I thought it was one or two more days.
This is the one I want in zero space? Back.
Yes.
You, you, you sure?
Yes, I checked.
Some motion, second, all in favor? If so, then I'll say. I wasn't sure.
SB twenty-three, thirty-six, Cole, Cole Dell Canyon. This is the daycare that's on Whiteville Road. The board had requested the African American plan showing basement, um, not finished for the alcohol. He uses that have been discussed at the meeting. I believe the African American copy of that, I also.
That's the one.
I don't think we typically want to make that.
No. Is that show as unfinished or just open space? Resolution showing good, open space.
It is shown as unfinished on the architectural plans. Resolution specifically says open space because they did not see the word unfinished in the minutes. I wasn't sure. Or make the determination that the act was under the impression that you just wanted it as open space.
Easy, that was unfinished. That was the intent. Not because of all open play areas, it can't be simple, but open play or anything like that. No, only. It's take care of time. We did not discuss making this a play area. Okay. We didn't discuss whether making this a play area. We just discussed, yes, and not simple, but.
The African American play area.
During the conversation?
Yes.
Okay. So we should not change whatever we had initially. I, I thought it was unfinished.
I, I believe it was said unfinished, and the act said we want to use it for a play area, if you can't use it for catering. So there was some back and forth, and I don't think there was an ultimate decision on unfinished. Uh, Mr. Sable, Mr. Meyer, and then.
Okay. I don't remember. Maybe. Sable, you agree? Yes. So. Sorry. All in favor? All right.
SB twenty-three, ninety-nine, minor subdivision for four lots.
Move. Move. See, we, we, we. I don't remember all these.
You went out at this meeting, sorry. All of these, it's only Mr. Sable and Mr. Meyer.
Okay, so this is. Sable. The second, all in favor?
I'm very welcome. Uh, SB twenty-three, thirty-three, major site plan for a school. I did, um, I had a couple of conditions created to this resolution while we were reviewing it, which was, um. The. Oh, oh, was opposed. Um, they were going to add sidewalk on the east way, drive to the property from the building to the roadway after this authority request. And there would be no red. I believe that is all I can.
Yes. They move, just set the second. Don't remember. Wherever set. Okay. All in favor? All right. Okay. Uh. We only have tonight, uh, five people here tonight. I wish we had more members.
Mr. Raisin's here.
Mr. Raisin's here. There are some members that may have to be ready. There is so long. Ask everybody to try to do as fast as possible.
Um, the correspondent we have, the engineer presenting, is not here yet, but another public here tonight, so we've done on hold. Um, in his place, as a record, can you take to have a courtesy review for the industrial commission that was added on to the agenda again? Um, as a record, just for the state, can you take that person, get it out of the way?
Do we have a minus for that?
Yes, at the bottom, there's five, SB twenty-four, nineteen, for Lakewood Industrial Commission. The courtesy review for a minor subdivision, and a gravel parking lot. You will recognize that it is next to a previous site plan and the ones we talked about for tourist management. Um, it looks to me like this application is carving out the small piece that's going to the tourist management for parking. But then also have your larger parking lot that's proposed as part of this car.
Have you ever read the analysis?
Oh, we have a concept. A concept. The, the chair, like we would have it, it was September eighteenth. Uh, very simple comments, yes, that we have to. Get it. As a. Some, some relevance for.
So now. So you might.
Uh, no, well, this is the desert visioning on the property. I, I, because you have the industry to provide the space going on, and get access to.
Do you see, so I come, that's when I give you.
I do.
There's no downside to putting money.
William Stevens, I'm a freshman here at Landre, like a faculty here in New Jersey, and I have a view for part of this four tonight, passing through many years. Here tonight on this application for the Lakewood industrial commission, so this is an application for Lakewood township. As was originally discussed, it's a twenty-seven acre piece of property located in the middle of Swarthmore Avenue. So the property is shaded on the map on the board. These are maps that were submitted. Uh, twenty-seven acre parcel, basically at the very beginning of Swarthmore, where it comes off of Cedar Bridge Avenue. What the application, the industrial commission is looking to do is to subdivide this twenty-seven acre piece of property into two lots. Proposed lot nine point zero one, basically a four acre lot located along against Swarthmore. And a larger lot, twenty-three acre lot nine point zero two, which will take up the rest of the property. Both lots do conform to your M one zoning requirements. The smaller lot, nine point zero one, the four acre lot has within it, and we do show it on our map. And easily for the school, so the school is actually leasing property from the industrial commission to expand their parking lot. That lease is shown on the post smaller lot. And the remainder of the lot will be owned in perpetuity by the industrial commission. The larger lot, the industrial commission is, is looking to develop into a, a gravel lot. Along with a stormwater management system. So the twenty-three acres will be generally cleared, build a gravel lot that the industrial commission is looking to lease. As well as a stormwater management system, that they control part of from that particular piece of property. So we, we need the board's approval for the minor subdivisions. We need a few lots, if you perform new locks. And the underestimate is a courtesy review for the board's information, based on what the industrial commission is.
Basically, there are no grounds of what's allowed.
No, fully informed.
Are there flooding issues? Are there flooding issues in there now, that you need the whole storm drainage system set up?
No, there is not, but it is a requirement. We're constructing the gravel lot as, as part of this. We're required to go to the D P for a half a permit, so the stormwater does comply with the stormwater rules.
The gravel pit they're going to lease out to a gravel company, they're going to take gravel over?
No, it's not a gravel. It's a gravel parking area. It's to store overflow equipment from another owner in the industrial.
And there's going to be a lease between industrial commission and that owner?
That is correct.
For how long?
Decades.
Huh?
Decades.
Totally. Decades?
Maybe fifty or sixty years.
Maybe ninety, fifty or sixty years. It's a long term.
Has it been executed?
Not yet. This company's been in the industrial park for plus thirty years. And they're growing, and we don't want them to be. We'd like them to be accommodated here. And this is where they're overflow driven by their growth. Say.
And the, and the lease with the school, how long was that? Remember that application?
More than. At least thirty-nine years. That knocked out the request with the board. Originally, we had another thirty-something years.
Right. So that lease was actually executed?
Yes.
How much money that was? Small part of that.
I think it was two and a half acres. I cut that up in the next year. Because it's tough. Has escalate, so over the years, it will go up.
And the town's going to do the paper though. It's not paper, it's gravel. No, the small one, you do.
The small one, the school is doing whatever the school is doing. They leasing the land, whatever they do.
School.
The school is paying.
I would like. I think parking is very beneficial for town. Any other questions? Can you board on this? We have to. I'm sorry. We're open to the public, it's subdivision, right? It's more courtesy review. I, I, I don't see a downside to having a couple of comments. I believe that doesn't affect that, but this. Public area, so. Anybody in the public like to be heard on this application? Please come forward. Normally, those are the public. Last motion.
Make a motion. Second.
Subdivision. Also. I'll say. Mr. Sable, second. Would you offer, please?
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
And Mr. Raisin.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just, you know, the. A courtesy reveal is just a courtesy of telling the board what the government is trying to do, so the planning board can be guided accordingly and be aware of it. It's really not something the board should do, it's just. They have to tell us.
Well, this, Mr. Jackson, do we need a resolution for the minor subdivision approval, because we do need to file a map?
Yes, I'll, I'll get you back.
All right. Thanks, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate that. And a special thanks to the staff who came so helpful in accommodating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Application. SB twenty-three, thirty-five, made by Cole Dell Canyon. This is major site plan for educational center in the morning on Whiteville Road. You'll report overflow and use one lot over for the daycare. Perfect.
All right, I'm going somewhere, I'd rate this, Jerry, that we love our August twentieth video. Top of page three, the submission waivers include B two, K book, B four, Congress, and E ten, area increases in two hundred feet. C six, profiles and filling labs. And C thirteen, E I S, with the support that we waivers that has noted. Um, as far as plans and profiles, we can support for hearing purposes, and only if approved. Uh, we may need some profiles during, during the prize review. Um, and finally, we can support the waiver, the I S, based on, uh, nothing shown on D P mapping in the submission of the protection plan.
Last motion, all engineered representations. As soon. I'll say. Say the second, all in favor? All right.
Okay. Uh, under zoning, um, we believe a buffer variance is necessary for the education center. Um, relative, uh, to parking, we also believe that there's a branch required for parking. We best believe.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the government, it would be that with the omnipotent. Uh, which are indicated, um, and in regard to the, uh, drawing short of a minute, in regard to the parking, uh, waivers. Uh, we really don't need that, but we're trying to add as much parking here as possible. You'll get testimony regarding saving. Again, this time, sir, Brian Flanery. And Brian, I'm just sure.
Just swear from testimony before this board, Mr. Jackson.
I do. Brian Flanery, Jackson, Jersey license professional engineer, professional planner. Uh, A one, uh, I have marked is the dividend on the right. It is the chief three of eight that the plan submitted. It shows the, uh, proposed educational building in the river site. And the A three parking spaces in front of it off of Whiteville Road. Um. Uh, A two is a copy and sheet seventy-four of the tax map, showing the subject property highlighted in orange across the street as the Westgate development. Uh, as, uh, as was indicated earlier, uh, at the last meeting, uh, two lots away was an approval granted for a daycare, uh, on lot one point oh four. As the, going to Terry's report, uh, under zoning, uh, the, it's, it's going to be an educational use. We provided the, uh, the R V E report indicates, uh, the parking based on the, uh, main sanctuary. So, uh, based on that, fifty parking spaces are required, um, and eighty-three parking spaces have been provided. And, and indicated in, uh, item two under zoning.
Your class has been applied.
But the, if it goes as an educational, which is one for classroom, one for office, it's five. Uh, R V E, to be more conservative, went on the, because it, it, the, a house of worship and a school, they both teach, they both pray. It, it's, there's a fine line defining them. So to be, it's a gray area, so to be more conservative, we're saying, we're agreeing with Terry, uh, because I, I do that as often as I can. Uh, it's not good, good practice to disagree with, and I'm saying with each F T, we provided eighty-three. Uh, the relief that, that's indicated. Did, did I forget one?
Eighty-three or eighty-four, was that?
Uh, eighty-three is what's indicated in Terry's report, so I, I think that is less accurate. Okay. Uh.
Okay.
More than. Okay. Uh, so, uh, item two, the report indicates a buffer variance, uh, is, is needed. Uh, and item three says a variance is needed for parking within ten feet of the buffer. Uh, as you can see on the plan, the parking on both sides is approximately ten feet from the, uh, from the property line. We could increase that by eliminating one row of parking. Nineteen parking spaces we delete, we comply with it for completely by right, no relief application. It's my testimony that the fencing that we're proposing, uh, the application is supposed to comply with the intent of the organization in respect of buffering. Uh, but if, if we wanted to dot the i's and cross the t's, we could do that by eliminating nineteen parking spaces. To me, it's a no brainer. Nineteen extra parking spaces, uh, is, is certainly a good thing, and I, I will.
I'm sorry, Brian, is it a longer side?
Uh, along both sides, it's approximately ten feet.
We could just. We'll shorten it up on each side, because that's one.
We'll take the.
Section of parking.
Right. We would take the one row of parking in the center, uh, and, and that center island out. And, and that gives us about fifty feet, and then you move everything.
You move everything.
And move, move everything out.
You still comply.
We would still comply, it would not be as nice.
Do you know if one point oh five and one point oh seven are here today? Do you want to hear from the property? The joint properties?
Sorry, I.
I need. I need to do it for. Just swear from testimony, as you know, for.
I knew anything about. I see that with the. One oh seven.
Right.
The look right there, and I can. Now look at the seven. From the plan, he has no problems with requesting all the trees which are being proposed, and when you can't.
And one oh five, is he there?
One oh five, he did not look.
I know, it's an empty lot.
It's a lot.
Did you speak with him?
No.
He was here last time.
He was here last time. The one. Five is, five is one.
He was negotiating.
Honestly, don't really talk.
You have to see, probably just, and again.
We did, we have a second.
And, and the number. And the number last time that he was negotiating was where?
Negotiation, good.
Yeah, he thought he had some.
So what are you planning on putting on the 1.05, so I'm assuming it's a lot of this already?
Yes, yes. We've provided six for the night, and trees, and landscaping, yes.
What type of trees you putting on the side?
Whatever trees that your professionals, that makes sense on our providers would be my recommendation. If your professionals have a better idea, whatever they.
Are they any green diner?
That's typically what's used, in terms of buffer.
How big's the buffer right now?
It's approximately 10 feet from the property line to the.
And what should the parking?
The ordinance says it should be 10 feet. If you leave plenty undisturbed, you need, you need nothing. We're proposing the roughly 10 feet that's there with fence and the charm. In my testimony, we need the intent of the ordinance. And there is some gray language in the ordinance with respect to parking either provide 20 feet or provide fencing and landscaping. We're providing fencing and landscaping. We're requesting the variance, and I'll give the municipal land use law and the master plan just so it's on the record.
Brian, if you don't mind, play the save as possible. Can you, can you, if you support that statement, can you make sure that it's redyed over there?
Yes. Let me first point out that we have a revised architectural that shows the basement.
Not this is the area. Government's boards hold out a variety of uses in the basement. This is clarifying what you've done on these.
Just one question, Chairman, if I could. What's shown with the building in its entirety? You, I believe you're reading three spaces?
Yes.
The proposed building is UDO standards, and they're not requesting variance.
That is correct. That's correct. And all the uses of the building as shown on the plan mark more than the school. And it meets the definition, and we permit the use of the UDO, not it.
No, they got. What's different?
The other one is, the one that was first submitted, the architect showed would seem to be suites and rooms. And the intent was likely to be day-use rooms, but the way it was submitted wasn't what the applicant really wanted from the applicant. Looked at what was on the first plan, he said that's not what we intend, so. Fortunately, the RBE report was the one that mentioned the different uses for the basement, and that was residential. And that highlighted it, so then we could provide a proper night.
So the door is strictly for school?
Yes, yes.
So the bedroom is for. Small warming kitchen. And bedrooms. And there was no official floor, we was on the third, on the second floor. Second floor, the arbor, and the second floor, the living room, from that basement section. Second floor, the living room, section. Brian, that got a second. How many parking spaces do you think were required? Are there some good?
Seven, five zero.
There was zero in this area?
The plan that submitted went by the educational facility of school. And as a school, we only need one for classroom and one for office, which lines, correctly, quite fine. RBE, to be more conservative, said, let's look at it, you've got, let's look at it as.
Realistically speaking, how many, how many, how many, uh, gentlemen are at the table?
Forty. Currently, there's forty.
Does that sign that we increase that?
Yes.
Two?
I don't understand, what's the connection between the 2335?
You have an application of the.
Yeah, I mean, the two.
The same ownership of the property, we get a lot of this on the provision of the earlier childcare facility. We don't see that any of the. To do it in the form of the photo, we'll utilize the daycare, so daycare.
So, I'm saying.
There are two dependent.
Uses.
And. There's no whole other connection on the back, you know, they don't have to cross. The building will be using those facilities, however, this is standard.
But the dorm rooms are for single men, I imagine.
Yes.
Okay, so there might, but there's some married men too? I imagine a single man do not have children.
Please raise your right hand, just word from testimony before this board, would you call it good enough? State name?
The entire school is married men, the dormitory, we have a standalone.
A little closer, getting older.
The entire school, the college, are married men. We have the dormitory at 40, the end of life, where the married men, they still rest the entire day from nine till six. Then they lie down to 20 minutes, half an hour. They have a dormitory they can rest in, they can hide, make a run in.
So that's why you have the itty-bitty rooms?
Right, because they never have an hour.
I couldn't understand why those rooms were so large and small.
I'll go back to cut them.
So the concept is you bring the kids, drop them off at daycare, learn. And the kids take a little schluffy, you take a little schluffy, learn how to kiss them, and then go home. I never was one. I know, but I'll start. And less traffic in late would be, because of the.
So we ask the questions, remind you. So basically, traditional architectural bid is.
Yes, correct. So, it's justification for the variances, that is my opinion, we don't hate, but we're asking for anybody who's on the. Yes, if you look at the master plan in 2017, the vision statement says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. And for the previous stated reasons, it's my testimony that this does exactly that. The municipal land use law, NJAC 4455 D2 under purpose of the act, encouragement is flash to guide the appropriate use of development of all lands in the state, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and this does that for a inherently beneficial use. They would be C2 variances showing it relates to a specific piece of property, which I take clearly when you look at the exhibits in this fit, the purposes of the municipal land use law, which I just stated, are advanced. The variance can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good, and it's my testimony virtually conforming application, so that complies. The variance will not appear the intent and purpose of the zone plan zoning ordinance, and my testimony is, it's actually consistent with the zone plan zoning ordinance, and the benefits outweigh the detriments. My testimony, there's no detriment, so the benefits are pretty clear. With respect to the rest of the. No, there's no wall, it's not going to rent it out.
What's the difference in the one with the red, which one? What's the difference?
Well, full kitchen, you have a full commercial kitchen.
Well, I mean, it's that one, huh? How do you find it? Why don't you put it out?
There's no, there's no, there's no guarantee money.
Yes, we will, and that's by your board engineer with respect to the rest of the.
Thank you. I will not look to the public. You might have called back to be heard, please come forward. Signal the public. Mr. Stern, make some motion. Make a point, make a motion. Right, you know, it's a very heavy presidential label over there. I was just looking for you to, to make sure that the neighbors are happy with regards to the affecting landscape.
Yes, and the applicant, as you indicated, has met with the neighbors and will continue to do so, so the neighbors get a lot.
I would say, Mr. Stern, make a motion.
Mr. Sable. Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Herschel.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Raitt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next application, SB 2335 for Yashima Chara Venus, is the major site type of school on Ocean Avenue.
Sure. Looking at the letter we entered in for, on page three, under submission waivers, you have A22, purpose submission for Ocean County Planning. The B waivers, Tobo Concourse, and Amity Features, C6 Planes Profiles, C13 EIS, C21 Architectural Drawings. Under Ocean County Planning, the office engineer indicates that board approvals not required, says the project will not impact county drainage and is under maker of impervious area. Would the applicant be willing to seek jurisdiction on that? You've not applied for Ocean County Planning.
We did, we did.
Give us something and write us.
We did provide you a, a, a letter indicating the section of the Ocean County Planning Board ordinance. That says you're exempt, if this.
Well, what, can you say what that is? What is? We are a county road.
If you're not, if you're not impacting, located on a county road, and you're not impacting county drainage or something, and you have less than one acre of impervious, you're exempt. And there's a specific.
Just, this is citation.
I'm sharing the citation, he will look at it, and.
Can you just, harbor talking to County Planning Board with that letter?
Sure. That's fine, thank you. We support the B waivers as indicated. The utility profiles, we will support for hearing purposes, with the understanding that if we require certain profiles during site compliance, that we would get those. And then finally, the waiver of B EIS, if low EIS, we would like to be copied on the pending DEP web map application.
There are no questions. Second rule, I suspect of all neighbor, I.
And then under zoning, again, similarly, you have a buffer variance with respect to the UDO subsection, 18906A, as well as parking in the buffer, which requires a variance from 18906B. I believe that's all the relief necessary.
That is correct, Harry. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm the governor, turn back to the applicant. Again, it's Ryan Flannery, and I'll just. First, from testimony, give the before this board, would you?
I do, Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer, professional planner. A1 is a copy of sheet two of 10 of the set submitted. It shows the proposed building and the 16 parking spaces in front of it on Ocean Avenue. A2 is a copy of. Sheet 52 of the tax map with the subject property highlighted in orange. This lot was a, oh, A3 is a rendering of the, the building, showing the proposed architectural look of the proposed building. A2 shows where the subject property is, and this was part of a, a subdivision application that created this lot. It has, the rear, rear of the lot is not being used. A1, where you see, it stops at the limit of development, and you can see from A2 that it goes all the way back to Sampson Avenue and the rear part of the property, which is not being developed. There is wetlands in there, yes. So, under zoning, as indicated, it's a permitted use. We have the buffer, buffer relief, Terry's report calls it a variance. If you read the language of the ordinance, it says if you provide 20 feet, you don't need to do anything. If you go less than 20 feet, you provide fencing and landscaping. We're proposing the fencing and landscaping. We have the same thing with the parking within the required buffer. And again, it would be a 20-foot required buffer, and then we would need to do nothing. We're doing fencing and landscaping. And again, it's a situation where the ordinance says we need eight parking spaces. We're providing 16. If we eliminated four parking spaces, we could comply with the, the 20-foot buffer. But it's especially along Ocean Avenue, the extra parking spaces are.
Brian, do they ever widen, would they? Will you lose parking spaces? Brian, are they ever going to widen Ocean Avenue?
I'm not expecting them. I'm not expecting them to do that in my lifetime. Route 9, they started talking about in the 1960s. Ocean Avenue, they have to start to talk about, so. Just to give you a little perspective. They, the state does give you a desired typical section, we stayed out of the desired typical section, so.
Technically, if they want to widen.
If they want to widen, they have room to do. So, again, if I could give the, quickly, the justification for the variance relief. The master plan 2017, the vision statement on page seven, encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. It's my testimony, this does that. NJSA 4455 D2, the municipal land use law under the purpose of the act, encouragement is flash to guide the appropriate use of development of all lands in the state, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. It's my testimony that this does this. If a variance is needed, and we're requesting one, it would be a C2 variance. We need to show it relates to a specific piece of property, and this particular piece of property is very specific. The purposes of the municipal land use law, which I just testified to, would be advanced. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and it's my testimony, it's virtually a conforming application, and the relief we're asking is to provide extra parking. The variance will not appear the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and it benefits substantially outweighs the test of detriments. My testimony is that there are no detriments. We're providing the intent of the buffering, and the additional parking spaces, it raises substantial benefit. With respect to the rest of the report, there's some comments, 21 from the Shatree Commission, and my testimony would be the same. That we would do whatever is reasonable and required. One of the comments says we're feasible, and certainly we would defer to the board engineer on what's feasible, and we'll do whatever your professional says is appropriate and reasonable.
Here it says propose trash and recycling, we picked up that perp.
So the cans would be stored there, and then rolled out when you pick up curbs.
Is that not that?
How old are the boys in this issue?
High school.
And how old are the boys in this?
How do you get them? And don't say it, if you have, then they'll be fixed. What? There are dorms in the building, so they're not coming every day? A little bit larger.
How many boys have we need?
My goodness, where, the number of firms that we're. Every month says six. I live currently, they're very popular, but I have a testimony. Raise your right hand, do you? Firm, testimony, we need to support with the truth, the whole driven, not from the truth. Please say name. Name, R G, wow, yes. The chairman's permission, please proceed.
How many guys just could say, currently, how many students do you have in your school?
Thirty-five, both high school, with seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and, and the artificial buildings, not have that, fifty-five, sixty.
And currently, is anybody, there's no passing through your school, there's no, they come?
I didn't come back, right?
No, it's, it's, no.
How many, how many bunkers do you have? There's eleven, eleven rooms.
Four in a row?
Some of four, some five, some six, depends on them.
And that's all governed by building code of law, so they would have to get it, yeah.
Technically, you'll have an actual number of students. As much as you can have, and you'll be over the rules.
Yeah, but, yeah.
The term is a, is a side. So I said that variance or no?
Buffer, buffer variance, parking, parking in the buffer.
Is it, is it the buffer?
Parking is in the, yeah. And, and we could eliminate that by eliminating four parking spaces.
Oh, that'd be first, wait. If you eliminate this. And we feel the R D's had to be ordered by providing the fencing and the trees, but if it's a buffer there, if we didn't do, we were, as, as far as this time before, we should put the parking back, we wouldn't need to do the fence, the fence and the trees, which would be natural, but we feel that- Still, are any buffer at all over there, in the front?
Well, the, the front buffer, there's no requirement. The buffers are required on the sides of the rear.
And the, the setbacks.
The rear, we have no problem. Well, the setback is to the building. The parking is set back beyond the desired typical section of the O T. My philosophy would be that the parking as close as you can, because it's a school, it's on Route eighty-eight. In this particular case, it would set back beyond the desired typical section, and, and provide a, a small area there, but there's no requirement. In the M one zone, there's a requirement to set parking back twenty feet.
You can park up to the curb.
Well, you can't park up to the curb, you park up to your property line.
Up to your property.
And, and there are a lot of sites where it's parked up to the property line. And, and in a, in a situation on a busy road, there's nothing inappropriate about that.
How many, how many back to the others, Kevin? Currently, three, obviously, that's a problem. Going up to a man's, oh. Sixteen spots, you know? Boys are not driving? Boys are not driving. Not allowed to drive, and they're not driving? Not allowed.
The difference between a setback and a buffer?
I'm sorry.
What is the difference between a setback and a buffer, my education?
Well, in a setback, you can do anything you want. You just can't put a building. And in a buffer, the language of the ordinance stipulates what a buffer is. The intent of the buffer in this case would be to provide some visual separation for aesthetic purposes between the two uses. My testimony is that what we're proposing with the fence provides the intent of that. And, and the alternative is to lose four parking spaces to accomplish that. And to me, the benefits of the four additional parking spaces greatly outweighs what, in my opinion, on Ocean Avenue in this area, this is going to look appropriate, and the fences provide that intent of the buffer.
This, this state's going to find on right in, right out?
Yes.
That would obviously be our suggestion. I mean, where is this?
This is on Ocean Avenue, between where and where? You can see on A two, it's between Clover and Curragh.
On the record, we could explain, I see the back of property, it's a red front buffer.
Yes.
So that's part of this application?
Yes, as indicated in the territory report, we need a permit from the D E P, so nothing's going to happen until we, we get that permit and give the documentation to your-
And then he gives the permits.
Well, it's, it's, it's pretty much a cookbook type thing. If you do this, this, and this, you get the permit. Those rules have been around since the eighties, so they're pretty specific on what needs to be done and we'll feel comfortable doing that. Yes, absolutely.
Maybe we, if all the change be designed to have the in and out, the rest on opposite sides? No, 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 not at all. No, no, one laying in and one laying out. Instead of having them right next to each other, you're going to have another curb.
And we need, right, we need the O T approval. This was a local, yeah.
And they're never going to allow it until close to, so let's, let's, we'd be a raised triangle there to, in her right and right hand, and let's say it's hard to do.
Well, we, we could certainly submit to the D O T that way.
We would agree that it would be requested on the, for the O T. We would just ask, if the O T hasn't been, they don't want it, we don't have to come back before the board. We have no problem submitting it. If they say no, we just don't want to come back before the board.
They denied it usually on the shoot.
I'm saying, I, I'm not, we won't request it, but if they say no, we just put it into the-
They're, they're very inconsistent. Depends on whether, it depends on who the guy's saying.
Is it legal to make a dash across the double yellow line?
Yes, it is, yes. No, we would, we would say, we would say, sorry.
Is it one, one per classroom or per office?
One per classroom and one per office.
So we have eleven classrooms in your offices, correct?
Which five classrooms? You have eleven more.
Office, so we need, office, office is also- So we have eleven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, eight classrooms slash offices?
Yes.
Okay, so you have eleven.
We have sixty.
And how much for the shoe? Shoe we don't need?
The shoe is school function, right?
Yeah.
We need eleven. We need eleven parking, how many do you need? What does it say? Right, how many parking?
Tech.
How many cars says tech?
Thirty.
Tech, right.
I'm providing eleven, it's a ten, we're providing eight.
Five, six.
Yeah, close line. We have submission requires ten all three spaces, and they exceed the ten.
That was out here, if it was a shoe, I mean, what do you mean? Uh, you want to, you want to, you want to, you want to? We got the application for, for- And you know, I'm, 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 this is board, so, can you use? You know, this is coming for school.
For over in ten years, somebody says, hey, let's have a shoe.
They have to choose that, they have to move, or they'll be, for your permission. And they don't meet the park for, you have the right. You deny that a patient based upon, they don't meet their parties.
The change has a better resolution.
Oh, they have to sign it together.
Well, then they're, they're CEO and, or-
CEOs of the school.
You're conceding that in the resolution, it'll state it's just to a synagogue.
This is a school, this is a school that has a, a room to provide, it's for the school.
Right, I understand.
Yes, a standalone synagogue, they would have to come back before this board.
Typically, they would be able to go to the zoning officer for that if they were-
If they could demonstrate, it's the same thing. They couldn't demonstrate it based upon, they gave us the room, this is a school, they moved smaller, then they would be able to meet. It's a first school.
I think it's sidewalks. They don't have a large, they didn't give us. I'm not going inside the park from the road, still inside the shop. Yeah, it's some sort of pathway from the road, but from the- You might make, I actually-
Yeah, when students are leaving the location, how will they leave? What will be the mode of transportation?
Parents usually somewhere.
And how often are they leaving campus?
One of the parking lot.
Once a month.
Once a month.
Downstairs. The school's not, the school's not, so it's not a matter of, that they have to-
Do the students have three periods on their own that they can leave campus or whatever else is, or how often are they leaving campus on their own, without leaving the school?
So the applicant has agreed to put a bike rack in the northeast corner of the parking lot, the dead area where you can't park.
Now, they just drive people from the middle island.
Right, the middle island will put a, will put a sidewalk out to the sidewalk, along where they eat, and then we'll do a crosswalk straight then across the, the driveway.
What was the response, how often are they leaving? I mean, are they, are they walking or? Are they, no, to leave campus, I'm saying, are they allowed to leave campus in the evenings, to leave this school property in the evenings? What I mean is, are they Ubers, are they, are they Rete, to, to, as long as they please? They can't have their own Ubers. Okay, another point you may mention in, in item number nine about possible grading, temporary grading easements, is that going to be placed in?
Well, if the applicant can obtain the temporary grading easements, he will get them, and will provide that under resolution compliance. If not, we can build that, it just costs more money to build it without grading.
I mean, there's a concern of, of water issues, right? Is that, is that the issue?
No, the concern is, under normal construction circumstances, you would go wider than your, your property. If, if they can't get a grading easement, then what they're going to have to do is probably drive sheet piles or do what they do in the cities, where they build right on the property line. It's physically possible, it's just more expensive and inconvenient. So, in all likelihood, they will get those temporary grading easements. But if not, it's possible to build without.
I would open to the public, no question, but if you heard on this application, please come forward, signal or call to the board. Rest promotion of this application.
I'm making motion to approve this application, and so we're trying to get some type of-
Walkway. Has he read, read, read about the driving, on the ground, or what?
Striking walkways and, and a bike rack.
We have a second? I'll second. I just see seconds, moderate, maybe a little trip, walk, please.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Ardenson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That's the point we need to, Leonard S. Cooper Smith, this is the Meyer subdivision, to create three lots from two, on Amper Street, for, for-
Hello, Pat Jobb. What should I just make a question?
I'm going to ask him to do one two days from now on. Yeah, likely some program notice, so we're going to pull them out.
Which one?
It's not on this agenda.
Okay, sir, when you ready? Sure. Looking at our letter of law states, under zoning, on page two of the letter, lot width variances are requested. Common three all street partners required for lot, there it says one oh one, the data that these four all, all street parking spaces required, rate is shown. We'll have to testify as to the I, we'll see them three spaces, and then finally, under design waivers, you should review the property. They have to have waivers for sidelines, or, or not perpendicular. That's it? Thank you. That's it? Before from testimony, again, please, or would it be called? I do. Landlines, professional engineer, professional planner, from New Jersey. The applicant's right here in the front row, answering questions. I'm proposing to sub, two existing lots on Amper Street, two, three lots, one lot has an existing house that we demolished, that's thirty-six oh one, thirty-two, and an existing split double house will remain on lot thirty-seven oh one. In regard to the variances, because of the bend in the road, it's basically a ninety degree angle, the lots are very narrow up by the setback line with a, with lot width is measured. But as you, as you go back further, the lot spreads out, so.
Explain, we, we would count this setback, thirty feet in, that's where we count? Well, we count where the houses are.
No, you count where the setback is. And on these, on these strange lots, it's at the thirty foot line, yes.
Thirty foot, we go back thirty foot, and then we, we measure over there.
Right, and it says perpendicular to the lot depth, then, I've had-
These are tremendous lots.
Yeah, they're, they're oversized lots for the, for the zone. It's just, you know, because of that bend in the road. So if houses are about forty or fifty feet-
It's a good learning experience for a lot. This choice, this is a nice application.
Okay, so, the way the definition reads, just, we're, we're lot width- This is the office, one minute. You measure from the front setback line to the center of the rear setback line, and then you're supposed to measure-
So this setback line, the, the dotted line?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I missed one.
You measure from the, from the middle of the front property line.
The middle on the outside road?
On the road, right, by the road, from the middle of the rear property line. It gives you a straight line through the middle of the lot. Then you draw another line perpendicular, so they cross the ninety degree angle, and, and the ordinance is to measure across there. That's the, that's the dimension we have in the ordinance. I spoke to Dave Magnover, who wrote the letter about this. His interpretation is, you do that, but you also take into account the curve. That's why his letter says, the lots are actually wider than I said. So the, the number I have is actually the smallest width when you adjust the line that I could, I could figure out.
Like, like thirty-six point oh two, fifty-eight?
Sixty-two.
That's the smallest width.
Right.
And at what point is it the regular nine?
Where, where is he thirty?
Thirty, right. Was, was fifty-eight point sixty-two the last one?
No, he's saying, where is it?
I raised it now.
Where did that? Come out on the- No, it's not shown there.
Where is that, the point at fifty-eight point sixty-two? I don't see it.
Eighty point sixty-two.
I'm looking on the chart, the zone chart. Lot thirty-six point oh two.
I see one that's on there.
Okay. That's, that's right along, right along, from, from property line to property line, right at the setback line. So along the dotted line is a straight line going from property line to property line. It's fifty-six, fifty-eight point sixty.
Correct. And then, and required is ninety, and required is ninety. So you end up with a ninety foot wide lot, probably about fifty, fifty to fifty-five feet back.
And we, we will, we'll also be situated.
That's about, that's, that's approximately where we're at. The houses will be at least forty feet back, because we'd need to get four parking spaces. You end up with a double wide driveway, and, you know, a little bit of setback to the house. You don't have parking right up to the door.
We're not going to be buying, like, any side yard setbacks or anything.
No, we're not proposing any side yard setback, so-
It'll be, it'll be setback enough, as I mean.
No, a little bit further back.
Because if we start at the fifty-eight point, you're not going to build that house.
No. No, because then you only have required twenty-five foot combined side yards. You only have a twenty-eight foot wide house. That's ridiculous. So by the time you, by the time you build maybe a fifty foot wide house, you're well back on the lot.
But you still would be conforming in the zone, even if you started, if you moved the line all the way back to that ninety foot, you still have a pretty big lot.
Yes, absolutely.
But the front and the road, or just.
It's a lot narrower.
No, I get it.
Narrower than fifty-eight?
Yes. But there's no, there's no frontage requirement in the ordinance. It's lot width which is measured back by the setback.
What is the narrowest point?
Well, the narrowest point would be where in thirty-six oh two, along the front property line, that's thirty-nine feet wide.
That's what makes sure cars will go in and out?
Yes, there's plenty of room still to get an eighteen foot wide driveway in that thirty-nine feet.
You're trying to do a monitor, Tom, if you just call the property to the setback?
Right. The next count, number three, was about parking. The existing house on thirty-seven oh one is an older split level dwelling. So it has no basements, and there's no basement parking in that house. So the three parking spaces that are shown on the plan are adequate for the probably over, probably only required two. Yes. Oh, definitely. If they take the house down, they can provide four parking. Right, we wouldn't, we wouldn't. No, once you take the house down, you're not granted parking. They don't want for that anymore.
No?
No. You can't leave up one, board wall that house, and then rebuild the rest.
That's the point, they will add the parking.
Okay, we'll make parking. Those are the two variances that we'll point out. The one design waiver is for non-racial lot lines. The municipal land use law says if there, you should try and everything can have the lot lines, you know, radial to the curve.
Radial to the ground?
Right, so if you extend the lot line out to the center of the, the center of the radius, they pass through the center. Because of the way the size of the lots.
Figuration of the lot.
Right. So it's just a waiver, many times we have lots like this. Really, with regards to the rest of the letter, what technical comments would you give?
Excuse me, Chairman. Glenn, if you can put testimony on the record, please, about the three spaces that are shown for lot thirty-seven point oh one. I see existing, I'm sorry.
That's existing house, it's a split level, then it's not.
There's no base spaces or.
There's no basement parking possible.
Oh, can I show you? I, I heard this, and I didn't pick up what you're saying.
Sorry.
I apologize.
Did you put on the record, the reasons for the variances?
Basically, the variances are necessary because of the lot shape, the property, the benefits of granting variances. So we could develop new more houses, an extra house, outweighed the detriment of granting variances. Again, by the time we get to where the house is, the lots will be, you know, closer to that ninety foot requirement.
Does the fencing go into the adjoining properties?
There's a, there's a fence shown on the survey that is probably older and from the shopping center that's behind us. And it actually cuts through our lot. So that, we're gonna take that down. Remove fence.
The third fence into this?
It's there, it's not our fence, their fence.
You know, crooked. Is there a grand power over that?
No.
It's only, if it's there for ten, fifteen, twenty years.
Okay, light, no. Let's go a little. No, there's no such thing as once it's there. Not?
Oh.
And normally, you can tell the adverse hostile open uninterrupted and continuous. That's what you have.
That's talking on the water.
And why?
State of Washington. Any questions for any board members? Because the applicant did that, that's another variance or another defined waiver. That means the last one is. No, still our lot.
Open to the public. Open to the public.
If you hear this important signal. We're closing to the public.
That's my wish for this application.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Sable calls, and Mr. Meyer second, not that case.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Chairman, would you like to take correspondence items since the engineer's seat, or do you want to roll over? Okay, we're gonna go back to correspondence item SD, twenty-one fifty-three. This is a previously approved subdivision. The applicant's right back to request modification in drainage design. Technically, changes to drainage and grading requires more approval. That's why they're back here. It has been reviewed by the county engineer, as well as Public Works. Public Works, I believe, is the one who suggested the change to this drainage. And Public Works sent me email confirming their acceptance of the plan as provided.
Terry, do you have anything for that also?
No, Chairman. Like the senary indicated, both the engineer and the Department of Works have looked at the drainage change and found that to be acceptable.
Good evening. I do. Joseph Kishuba, KDA Engineering Services, Mass. London, Jersey. Most of the testimonies are provided, very simple change. We're just changing some drainage. The road widening is remaining, the sidewalk and curbs are remaining. We just look through.
And new variances?
No new variances, no new relief, actually. It's just a change in the drainage as a result of the discussion with DPW.
They requested that they.
They, they sent us an email approving the plan as is, and are finding it acceptable.
Any questions for any board members?
They requested a immediate change. The owner spoke to DPW, DPW saw it as a proper change. So we kind of initiated it, but DPW stumbled with it.
Terry, anything? Make sense?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ritz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This would have done, this would have come at this layout at the time of approval. It would still get approval, not reducing, I mean, reducing the size of the drainage.
Correct, correct. Had we done it at the initial plan, the portion, we would have had to come back for it, correct.
It wouldn't make a difference to that approval, though?
No, it doesn't change any variances, waivers, anything, or just purely drainage.
Although we need a lot of control in this area.
Yes.
This is specific, no proofing or. No more, no lots of it. Can I ask Mr.? I thought you seen here the motion? I did, I did. Is that good?
I want to ask Mr. Jackson, just a gentleman. John, can we, if we grant a subdivision, can we make it conditional in future, hypothetically, that they won't come back and ask for duplexes down the road?
Yeah, I would, please not application.
Very pretty, very nice big lots, but they back in a year.
It would have to be a rational, there would have to be a rational, sustainable basis behind that limitation. But I am familiar with cases where boards have put deed restrictions on approval stating no further subdivisions, and that's been affirmed by the court. So I think if you're putting something like no further duplex, or no duplexes, it's like that. You're saying you're creating an undersized lot, and you don't think duplexes would be appropriate there. I think the more difficult thing would be, you know, having a rational basis why that's necessary to have it perpetually or forever. But, yeah, I think, I think it's possible. I'd have to know, it would all depend on the nuance of the.
Obviously, that's this last case, so they were huge lots, looked like a nice thing, but like my esteemed colleagues pointed out, maybe in a year they come back and ask for duplexes, and it's like, oh, that's, that's soon. But then if we're in the zoning order.
How's the PD Galley get to?
Okay, fine, thank you.
Recognized by the chair, he was asking me. I mean that, with all due respect, you taught me everything I know.
Application SD fifteen eighty-eight made by the county attorney. This is an amended major subdivision to a retaining wall from one of the residential lots from this previously subdivision.
Just a couple comments, Chairman, per our September fourth letter, the views are always straightforward. Under zoning, there is a variance required.
Turn it a little bit closer to the mic, please.
There is a variance required for nine point eight foot side yard offsetting for lot three point oh one versus ten foot required.
This is a new variance, close up in the painting?
That's my understanding.
Four inches short?
Nine, nine point eight feet, probably like three inches, correct. And then under design waivers, the proposed retaining wall is gonna be one foot off the property line with a maximum height of five point seven feet. The rest of the comments are technical nature, I'm sure I can, I can play the testimonies, Mr. Sable.
Do you swear, run testimony against the first board member, to the whole group of members?
I do. Landlines professional engineer, professional planner. As Terry indicated, we're here to make changes. The benefit in subdivisions without, are maintainable around the rear yard of the property. Basically, the property does an elevation of ninety-nine. Basically, southeast corner of property, all the way down to eight two, at Central Avenue. We have four trees in progress. Yes.
One's the whole plant, and one is what you.
This is the survey, this is surveying the property.
Are these listed? Thank you. Okay, please.
So, so basically, this backyard has a ten percent slope right after Central Avenue.
So this was approved already?
And these are approved fifteen years.
How did retaining wall, when the elevation goes to the top of the hill?
I have, I have no idea. This was approved probably fifteen years ago. The original number is fifteen eight.
Mr. Tress wasn't the original?
No, no, he's.
I think it's fifteen years ago. How do you do it?
Right.
Terry, will you?
No, sir. This is your fault, Terry? John?
This is before my time. That's my story, I'm speaking right.
What year?
I think it had to be about fifteen years ago. It's a fifteen.
Don't tell us.
Fifteen eight is the subdivision.
It goes from four seven hundred or so, or about.
Nineteen, you're in a nineteen twenty, it's like seven years ago, that started.
That'd be about right. What's the draw, the highest one?
It's, it's seven feet from the back of the house. Out to the northeast corner of the property by Central Avenue.
This is built in ninety?
Yes, this house is built for us.
Is why you're coming back?
Because the county engineer said, because we're changing it to provide this grading and retaining wall, we have to come back and get amended major subdivision capable. Basically, the change.
Changes in grading require board action.
Who's making the changes in the grade?
The applicant. Well, this individual property owner in the construction of their house, I guess.
He's just a house.
So it's just for the retainable, then?
Right.
Because it was part of a previous board approval that had an overall grading and drainage plan for the whole subdivision, to change that, mainly for.
So they had an plan to make some sort of retaining wall, but not such a big one, or not at all?
I don't believe there was a plan to put in a retaining wall, though.
So why are we separated this? Why are we here? What, what then occurred? We say, now we need a retaining wall, they're expensive.
Well, the owner of the house would like to have a backyard where if his, if his child drops a ball by the house, it doesn't roll all the way down the hill to Central Avenue.
Would you put it back?
Well, yeah, but it's still, it's still a very steep backyard.
He's waiting to make it level.
He's trying to.
You're waiting to make it more level?
Correct.
That's what I was looking at, I understand. We're a little slow, but we get it.
You got a lot of stuff, gloves to pull that out.
So you're taking, kind of going like that?
Yes.
Okay, you need a retaining wall.
Basically, like this, you're gonna put a retaining wall here and bring the backyard.
A little too, you're rolling down the hill.
Frank, tell it. Water runoff?
Water runoff, you have more gradual slope, I believe, and Glenn can testify, you're not changing the overall drainage pattern. It's slow because it's gonna be flat, is that reasonable?
Yes, the water that flows toward the, towards the northeast, toward that, toward that back corner, is still going to go in that direction. It's just gonna go a little slower, it's gonna hit the wall.
In any, any excess of lower wall, that's the surface.
I mean, any adverse water flow will be for the homeowner?
It'll go outside, won't it?
I mean, it's gonna be a slower water runoff, I mean, if in a heavy rain, it's gonna hit on the. Right, but, no, no, it still has enough slope that. I was just saying, any adverse water runoff will be for the homeowner itself, it'll affect it mostly. Mostly.
It's not helping onto the neighbors.
Water duct, the west side, plus the northwest corner, it will go into that corner, right there, we call it, we call it a.
No, no, it goes, it goes up, it goes up toward Central, based on the. Okay, up, it goes up and toward the, where the T is in the, in Tress. I remember.
It's a long retaining.
So this is higher, this is low?
That's the low spot.
So the water right now is going to avenue to the street?
Correct.
And if you have a wall, where's the water?
Same place.
It's just gonna like, it'll be like a wall.
Right, instead flowing quickly down, basically, actually, instead flowing quickly down the slope, and none of it, and very little of it percolating into the ground. At a lower slope, more water likely will percolate into the ground. So probably, very minor, but we're reducing runoff to the property.
Is there any drainage on the street in that corner, where it flows through now?
Yes, there are, I believe, there's an inlet in the street, and there's one actually behind a curb, because there's a detention basin on one of the. I think it's two lots over between the two houses, there's a detention basin. So this is the outfall from the detention basins through this twenty-four wide drainage system on the neighbor's property. And so there's a drainage, a storm drain in the street probably twenty-five or thirty feet away.
Glenn, is there a, a, a retaining wall from the front?
They're proposing a chain link fence around the retaining wall, because it's pretty high. Yes, and at its highest, it is just over.
Just under six feet.
Is there a recharge trench on the property to take off water from the house?
That was, that was constructed when the house was built, yes.
And that's effective, and despite that, there's still a lot of runoff?
Well, the recharge trench gets put in with a new home is only for the roof of the house, it's not for the property.
So the water, so this building off the stuff that's coming out of the property, not that it's coming off of the building?
Correct.
You want to know the record, one of the requested variances?
Well, we're, we're, the one variance that's requested is for nine point eight or ten feet is required. Basically, it's a minor difference in, in surveying. I don't know whether the house was built two point two feet off the, you know, incorrectly. Or, you know, our survey just doesn't quite, you know, match their surveys, so we're off by point two feet. And it's, it's, you know, if we hadn't surveyed the property, nobody would ever have known it, it doesn't affect the neighborhood. It doesn't affect the neighbor. A little over two inches.
It's beneficial to have a retaining wall.
And, and retaining wall always doesn't need a variance, but it is beneficial to the, to the property owners.
Terry, you're okay with the drainage more useful than...
Yes, we are, with the understanding that what you have out there now, as Glenn indicated, it'll have less slope, which means that the rate of runoff on that property is actually really slowing down less.
Which is good.
Which is good.
Any other questions, any board members?
Would hope that Republicans would not like to be heard on application. Too easy, you went to the concept, that's, that's... So are these tents always here?
Twenty feet wide is the reason? That's an existing easement from a existing detention basin after Central Avenue.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Raisler?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Raisler?
Yes.
Thank you. Our last application for the night is SB twenty-three thirty-seven for congregation housing sofa, bosom sofa, the main site line for synagogue.
But, but unless they're questioning, we think those writers called new central rather than essential. I'm saying it is, it's new central, it's not central, not the paperwork, it's same central, right? No, I'm saying the S code is correct, I'm saying when they cross me there, it's called new central rather than... Just to clarify, I guess, the...
What I asked, please be quiet in this one, yes? The mic fix something, go, please be quiet. Terry, one second, no, no. Terry goes first. You might go through the report, please.
Yes, I will, chairman. As indicated on page three, under submission waivers, we have A twenty-one traffic study, A twenty-two approved submission motion county planning, the B waivers, B two, B four, B ten, and four proposed immediate features, C six utilities, and C thirteen D I S. The rationale backing out against gave for the traffic study waiver is that it is a small synagogue in a residential area. Obviously, the board is going to have to be satisfied with that. We agree with the outfit's interpretation that Ocean County Planning Board, that the approval is not required. We can support the B waivers as indicated. For plans and profiles, again, we support that for hearing purposes only. With the understanding, if approval is granted, that we may require at least some profiles of hearing compliance. And then finally, we can support the D I S meeting.
Our last proposal on the motion to division is... I just said, all favors?
Continuing under zoning, as indicated at the top of page four, our review, we believe that there's a minimum of sidecar, I'm sorry, I think on rear yard setback required. There may be building coverage, variance required, laugh at testimony on that. Reviews required from perimeter buffer requirement. And finally, under design waivers, you have a waiver with respect to a road widening easement, a little dedication, and then also a waiver from U D O subsection eighteen eight to seven C four relative to driveways located within thirty feet to intersections of public streets. Glenn, I think that's all we need, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. How far is that?
I'm sorry?
How far is the proposal? How close? Glenn, why don't you give testimony on that, please?
I'm going to try again. Do that, Terry? So do you swear from testimony against the first amendment to the Trump Act?
I do.
Counselor, please put your appearance on the record. Maurice Rosen, about a tiny, you know, activity, the residents is on...
First question was, how far is the park in the driveway off the corner? From the, from the corner to the, opening driveway?
It'll be flesh, I just simply repeat, but we still have a corner.
It's, it's... It's okay. It's twenty-seven and a half feet between the, between the Bridge Avenue curb line, actual proposal, and the driveway. So we're, we're short, just a little bit. And one of the part doing that is that most of the applications on Bridge Avenue, you haven't been getting this. We are wanting to provide the bridge avenue, Azmaneta, to the sixteen feet from the Santa line. To give you thirty, halfway to sixteen feet, technically, that would give you thirty-two or something, on the other side dedicated. So if we're providing the, the roadway and the long bridge and Manetta, if we didn't do that, we'd be fine with that, with that, with that quake, so. I believe, I believe it, by providing that, you know, I think that's a better situation to get the roadway and the long bridge. Also, we have to move the driveway over, that, that is, we lose parking. I get with very much that part of the separation. So send back to, well...
Are those the variances up there?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're proposing a rear seven hundred square foot synagogue building on the corner of Bridge and Manetta. Terry has identified we had a rear setback variance of ten feet where twenty is required. That's the, the rear of the building, the south side. We are proposing a white vinyl fence around the property and the Shaintry Commission has requested six to eight foot arbor by these and or five to six foot brickage edges along and also help off it.
And what's next, is that so?
Uh, yes, with the usage, that's our... I believe that, I believe that's a newer house on seven feet and...
Nothing loose comes over there, ready, ready for...
Correct. How big is it, is it, I'm sorry, now it's a bit of a picture, yes, there's an existing house on lot seven behind us and it looks like a duplex on the lot next door.
You're not asking any parking variance?
No, we, well, to clarify that, the, the letter does indicate that remaining parking variance because we have a, let me find out where it is, let me find where it is. Comment number eight. Architectural plans show that the square footage of the main sanctuary is eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and twenty feet, which would require nineteen parking spaces, we have eighteen. One issue with the, with the architectural plans is the building is four inches too big. And I had indicated in our review letter that the revised architectural is yet if approved, the building would be four inches smaller. By taking the four inches off the building, sanctuary is four inches smaller. And that makes the main sanctuary seven, one thousand seven hundred ninety-nine point five square feet. So we're just under the eighteen hundred...
You got it very close.
Eighteen hundred square feet, so we do not need parking variance. Based on the...
And also, the only variance that you have is the rear setback. Instead of twenty feet?
We have ten.
And you're giving trees and, and a gate.
And, and a fence in, in lieu of...
That's right.
And then again, that's also the buffer waiver, twenty feet is required on the side and rear. And we're providing the fence and the trees as the ordinance, you know, recommends if you're going to grant a waiver of that twenty foot box. So...
And the bricks falls on the long that...
Yes.
So they go head in?
They're heading.
And then they go back out into the old Tommy traffic to get out?
Yes. Manetta's, uh, no, not that.
It's a quiet, we'll see.
No, I'm not going to say it's a quiet street because the school's on the other side of the, the, uh, there's a school on the opposite side of the street, which is just below the picture. But, you know, we're close to the corner, people are slowing down.
Do you have no key, Mr. Peters launched in the park, off of Bridge?
Correct, we do not access Bridge at all, where the current house has its driveway backing out on the Bridge Avenue.
Terry, are you okay with that, back in lane two, let's call it Manetta?
It's not ideal, truthfully, but it's been done before.
It's what?
It's been done before.
Really? If you took those away, you still don't have parking there?
No, we, we, we need a variance for those three spaces.
These are the three.
We definitely need those two.
We had it on hold on one.
There's, there are a lot of, um, there's a lot of synagogues we've done that have, that everybody backs up. There's one over on, on Park Down, we need it. I understand the majority of our parking being the drive, which does not back down on, on Manetta.
But is there anything on Terry before the... Sidewalks make a run for property, babe?
Yeah, we're proposing all new sidewalks with the road widening. We need the waiver from providing a dedication. We're, we're providing easements for the right of way, which in my opinion is the same as dedicating all that. Problem is, if we dedicate, then a lot smaller, then we need variances for a lot area and that type of thing, so.
Technically, it serves the same purpose?
Same, same, serves the same purpose, yes. But now we have all new sidewalks, new curbs, paving the roads, more intended.
Danny Tapper and Marv, we picked up on your...
Yes. Curb side, we have a dumpster adjacent to the enclosure for the cans adjacent to the building.
I'd like to discuss, I want to show you again. I'd like to discuss the use of premises, it should not be a, a, a game factory. It serves small accommodation, it's a fashion house, so there will not be a whole downstairs or some... It's going to have a massive bakery, bakery only, and a weekly for purposes of convenience. Therefore, it's something which not necessarily attract too much traffic to the area and beneficial for both the area and convenience. It's true to be led by a brand.
There's nothing else that makes you size it, I suppose?
And it...
What?
Big enough.
Maybe it's on your, for the people who break the law?
Correct. It's existing, it's how they, it's two inches, we need to show they have a small, well-run accommodation and, and it's a, I believe, it's...
Is this shule existing?
Yes. And, sorry?
Where's the numbers, is that here?
Oh, within walking distance. The next testimony from, just whoever of the shule, who wants to...
Do you swear from testimony against the first amendment to the Trump Act?
Yes, I do. How the name is, Morning weather. Look, our husband's safe, it's a shule that's in the neighborhood already, it's currently on Seven York Avenue. As the lawyer stated, that it's a friend, is, is a rabbi, and it's all, it's on the furthest, which other than White Oak, which is off, which, which is off Bridge Avenue further on. All the congregants, they do live within walking distance and within ten minutes walk. It's been around for, um, close to, over, over two years at this point. And it's expanding in a, a fast, fast rate that we're, we're looking for in, in, as I said, it's front of Seven York Avenue in a small building and this opportunity came up to us. And it was appropriate location, being that ninety-five of the congregants live within, within the ten minute walk. So all, all the individuals right here, those are the congregants. We're just looking to, you know, as a low tongue, no, no mall, no simple hall. It's not going to be a, um, many, many, like many factor, like Mr. Hertzel said. It's not going to be a many factor, we'll have a, you know, mainly on, on the, on the weekends, it's true. As, as it's right now, we don't have any, any, um, any, and so congregants taking place during the week. It's only on, on the weekends only right now.
Do we really have any, you know, on the weekdays, will only be one?
Correct.
The morning one and the night?
That's correct. We're not looking to multiple and to, um, sure, the, the neighborhood is that way. There's, uh, there's other, other synagogues that do that already in the neighborhood. Yeah, most, most with, with intermittent walking, so it's, parking is not, uh...
Parking, then there's a big issue.
What, away to that, yeah?
Is that on the street traffic? No, no, on, on the street.
Manetta does, Manetta does have, yes.
But can you park on each side of the, still have parking room or...
It's, um, you definitely have one side on Manetta.
You could, you could park, you can, you can space, you can come up from.
There's, there's currently, there's, um, there's, there's parking definitely one side of Manetta. And there's one side parking on Ridge as well. I don't want to...
Terry, why don't we calculate the, as much of the balcony area, the, the parking?
I'm sorry, say again, please?
Volcaney area, we're not calculating parking, we don't need that, that is not...
I believe the parking is based on the U D O, which will not include the balcony.
That's the main sanct, sanctuary?
That, that's correct.
So are they written in treatments?
Based on the main sanctuary.
And those two, two roofs, the secondary roofs, they, they have an office or...
They don't require parking. It's only the main sanctuary.
So only the school, the office requires it?
That's correct.
Anybody else would probably like to be heard on this application, please?
Currently, the, the streets are, you just enter it from Manetta, is that correct? You can't enter it from Ridge the way you want to have it to the parking lot. There won't be an entrance to the parking lot from, from Ridge? No, there'll be no entrance to the parking lot from Ridge. Great. The, the house that's on this property right now, that has its driveway out. Right. So those people are backing out. They currently have it onto Ridge, right, so you're not going to have that? No, we are not, no. Three spaces. The chairs. Is there any reason why we would only want it right out from the parking lot? Because of the proximity to the corner of Ridge and Manetta? Sir? Any reason why we'd only want exiting the parking lot, that should only go to the right because of the proximity to Ridge? Is there enough space to make left turns, so it can be safely, uh... It's a small city. Now, there's enough room for, for two cars to, you know, stack. It's wide enough at that point? Yeah.
You have, especially with wide turn... If you have a car stacked, the wheels move, obviously, you definitely have to wait to come out.
Right.
But there is room to park.
What is the garbage?
Yeah, there's a, there's a enclosure on the, uh, Manetta side of the building, up against the building. Six by six, um, exactly. Energy block enclosure on the side.
I don't see it on the ground.
The sheet is, it's not three or seven.
Would you like for the public to be heard on this application, please? Signal positive, color. Rest motion to second edition. I'm not making the motion to the department. On the, on the three. I make motion to the...
Second.
Mr. Smiley would like to be in the middle of our show?
So it's a second, it's broken.
Mr. Sable?
No.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenberg? Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Raisin?
Yes.
Thank you very much.